Doing out there tonight, it is great to have you with us. We are live here at the Matsui Family Restaurant. And tonight they're going to have the Matsui School Board candidates debating it out, or it could be just a forum depending on how many of them actually show up. And the Matsui Women's Republican Club is the one hosting this event and will be asking the questions here tonight. This is your chance to be able to find out who is running for the Matsui School District and who we would like to be able to vote into office. And so if you haven't done it yet, please take a moment and like and share this video. This is going to be very interesting to see what's going on. I know I've had a few things I've had to say up on the top of the post for this one. There they go.
...............................................................
Right. And Mike, would you like to lead us in touch, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Okay. So, just a couple of items here, a couple of housekeeping items. What we would like to do tonight is, so I have to apologize because my agenda, I got everything printed except for my agenda, and so I'm left with looking at my optics here on my cellphone. But, um, so what we would like to do is have a vote or just a raise of hands if we should actually hold our December meeting. We know that we'll be taking a vote and taking nominations for the Executive Committee in January anyway, so...
In December.
In December.
Okay, I'll put them back on here in just a second as soon as they get done with their internal announcements. Again, if you haven't taken a moment to like and share this video, please do that right now. This is your opportunity to make sure that we have informed voters out there this year and that they know who they're electing for when it comes to who's going to be representing our children in school at the Matsui School Board. Making sure that woke indoctrination is not happening within our school districts out here in the Matsui Valley, something that is very apparent and evident there in Anchorage at the moment. If you caught the must-read Alaska's article that was just put out here today at a meeting on Tuesday, one of the parents had come in and started reading out of a book which I left in the excerpt, just slightly in the comments in the description above about what was discussed there that day. And so it was definitely worth your time to read when you think they're not pushing the CRT, LGGT, plus, plus, plus whatever community agenda within our school systems. That will be a real eye-opener for you to be able to participate and take a look and see. Take a moment, please like and share this video right now. Be greatly appreciated and take a moment and do that. They're just wrapping up or doing their normal intro, entry announcements for their organization here. And I started up just a little bit early so that we can do a little bit of chatting before this all begins. Again, this is where the Matsui School Board candidates that are running. It's going to be either a forum or a debate depending on how many of the candidates have actually shown up here today. If you didn't catch the Shelley Hughes and Mike Shower conversation about whether or not to have the Constitutional Convention, it's just a couple of posts back on my timeline on Facebook. You can find the video on YouTube, Facebook, Twitter, and hopefully here also on Rumble as I officially have my own channel there. If you haven't gone to Rumble lately, please go to Rumble and type out my name, Politic. We have our own channel there now and we are transferring all of our videos over from YouTube over into Rumble. And as soon as we get 100 people following us there, we'll be able to livestream to them too at the same time and we'll add that into our list of streamers as we go. Currently, you can find this video right now on YouTube, Facebook at Politic and Politic Unfiltered, and on Twitter. If you are, one of your favorite channels out there, just go to them. Or if you're a website browser type person, you can go to our website at politic.com and you will find it live there right now on our site. Just click on the live link for our broadcast. It's right there pinned on the front page and you'll be able to watch the show with us. So we really do appreciate you take the moment right now to like and share this video. Looks like they're bringing all the candidates up front. I'm going to go ahead and swap microphones and bring you guys all back into the conversation here in the room.
That's good. Do you want to be in charge of the microphone, Kathy?
Yeah, not really. You've seen how that goes in my meetings.
Alright. Well, first of all, we want to thank you for running. And we also want to take an opportunity to get to know you. So we're going to ask you to take a quick minute, minute and a half, two minutes, just don't go over two minutes or I'll cut you off at the knees.
Yeah, thank you.
And introduce yourself and talk about your platform and why you're running.
Hello, can you hear me?
Alright. My name is Kendall Cruz. I have worked in healthcare for the last nearly a decade now. I have four beautiful children and we live in Palmer, which is such a blessing. We moved here about five years ago when we were searching for our forever home. One of the reasons that I am running is because I have four children and I care about the future and I see what's going on and really saw through the pandemic what happened to our children in the Matsui borough but also across the nation. And I saw the blending of healthcare and the school system and I did not like what I saw there. I think one of the big things that I'm passionate about is getting healthcare out of the school system. We don't need a one-stop shop. It is not. The government provides everything for our children when they're away from us six hours a day. And I think that parental rights have really been trampled on and the controversial issues that we're facing today are really the battleground for parents and what we want our children to learn and what doesn't need to be done at school. And so I'm very passionate about that. I'm also passionate about the fact that our curriculum doesn't seem to be serving our community. We have a 60 to 70% failure rate in the peak scores and it's only going to get worse as we see the COVID policy education loss. So I want to really hammer down what curriculums we're using and educational theories that we're practicing and are they serving our community or are they not? So that's why I decided to run and I'm in District Two, so that's Palmer and the greater Palmer area. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Kathy McCollum. I am running for school board in District Three. That's Fairview Loop, KGB, and even out towards the college and higher, the higher road area. I was a teacher in the school district for 31 years and worked mainly in elementary school. I felt like I saw a lot of inefficiencies happening. I see a lot of ways that the district can be improved financially as well as academically. I am like Kendall, after COVID, I was really alarmed at how much change had happened in the schools and it seems to be slow recovering. It seems like we're sticking with some of those policies that weren't very helpful then and they've just become almost a habit now. So I'd like to see those things changed. I'd also like the school board to focus more on some of the policies that have been written in the past and need to be updated or looked at again and the school district following guidelines that the, the school board is even unaware of. And that, that's one of the things that happened just recently with the girls and boys bathrooms. Those were, that was a policy, or not really a policy, it was a guideline that the school district had that the school board was unaware of. So I'd like to see a lot more transparency and things like that. I was raised in Idaho and Montana and I've lived in Alaska for 33 years and have been married to my husband, Patrick, for 33 years. And I'm just excited to get in there and do some work. Thanks.
I'm Jacob Butcher, running for school board in District Five. It's going to be KGB and the foothills, basically south down through the Point McKenzie, Borough Road and Big Lake Community, out to the Houston city limits. I've got five children of my own, three sons and two daughters, ranging from a junior in high school down to first grade in elementary school. My wife and I have been married for, I better get this right, 16 years, I think. Yeah. So we, my wife grew up in the Matsui School District. I basically participated from sixth grade when I moved to the state up through the ranks. We have experience in moving our children around from school to school. Parent choice and school selection is a big priority of mine because that's what we have done throughout upbringing our five kids. We've had a mix of the public school district, homeschool, and a mix. I'm a big proponent of trade education, getting kids ready to enter the workforce straight out of high school. So the budget is going to be a big focus for me. I really am a big proponent of honesty and transparency when it comes to the taxpayers' dollar. It's not only your guys' money, the citizens of the Matsui borough, whether they have children in the school district or not, everybody's tax dollars, more than half of their property taxes are going into that budget and they have a right to know where their money's going and what it's doing. That's my money as well as yours, so that's, that's going to be a big focus of mine. I'm in full support of a lot of what the school board's been doing over the past eight to 12 months. I think they're on a really good track moving forward and we just need to keep that traction going.
I'm Kristina Seton. I am running in District Seven. That's going to be out towards Meadow Lakes, Big Lakes, Talkeetna, Houston. It's a very large area out there. I was raised in the Matsui Valley mostly. I graduated from Wassala High School. I have three children and they're, two of them are in high school right now and I'm seeing that education's very different than it was when I was growing up. There's been so much stuff that entered the school district over this time. And when my kids were younger, I thought I would make a big difference by becoming a teacher. So I've been a special education teacher out here since 2014 and I've been really involved in trying to figure out ways to get the administration to improve on special education and to make more clear policies in what we consider special education. Some of the behaviors we allow in schools and cover under special needs are not acceptable. Some of the policies that we've had really need to be reversed. So I'm looking to see transparency in finances. I want to see our teachers treated better. I want to see families to be more valued. I feel like teachers are put in a box right now. Many people don't know that they're handed a scripted curriculum. My last two years teaching, I was handed a script and said, "You have to read off this script and you aren't allowed to deter from it. And if your kids aren't learning, then you can't go do anything else. You can't add to it, you can't take away." So there are some things that really need to change and I feel like I can make the biggest difference by running for school board.
Fantastic. Well, I have some scripted questions and of course I'm going to go through all of these questions and then at the end we'll make sure that everybody has an opportunity to ask you their questions as well. So some of this you've touched on already, but I'd like you to take a quick minute to think about and answer appropriately. But are you for or against special interest groups or nonprofits injecting themselves into decision-making aspects of the school curriculum, programs, policies, under the disguise of, under the guise of healthcare?
Well, I could say a lot on that. So there, there's already a lot of that infiltrating the school system. You walk through a lot of the high schools and they want to get funding, so there are rainbow flags on every door. And so there are a lot of special interest groups that come in really regularly and they are not teaching our kids reading, writing, and math. They're teaching our kids whatever politics are popular. So I am completely against special interest groups influencing education. I feel like we need to have input from every community member, but if we're going to allow things like Planned Parenthood in the class, we better allow churches in there. So I just feel like it needs to be equal across the board if we're going to let them in, but I'd rather we don't let them in in the first place.
Yeah, I agree with that also. It's really kind of appalling to me how much federal funding is attached to social and political issues in the school system itself. Just learning about the policies that the school board has passed this year and how much federal funding was tied to it behind the scenes for food programs and taking basic essential responsibility of lunch, providing lunch for the kids and tying that federal funding to policies is just, it's disgusting to me. We just, yeah, focus on the reading, writing, and arithmetic and you take a look at the Joint School Board Matsui Assembly Meeting and seeing that we're placed 53 out of 50 states for some of these basic education. You know, let's, let's focus on getting our foundation up to par before we even think about injecting this other stuff.
Right. So I'm absolutely against special interests putting themselves into the education system whatsoever. We're seeing a lot of that right here in the valley with the Matsui Health Foundation, let's just say it. They have millions of dollars and they are targeting our schools. And they just received another $15 million that I'm sure they're looking at as potential ways. I have watched the school board actually take money from the Matsui Health Foundation this school year already with, with programs that I think are questionable, that are tied to counseling in schools and things like that. And there are, I mean, we can't get around that these days. There's an agenda. They, they wouldn't be putting their money into our schools without a reason for it. I don't think it's just benevolent. So I'm definitely against that and, yeah, there we go.
My feelings are near Kathy's. Being in healthcare for so long and helping write grants to get funding for special programs, there's always extreme ties to that. And we really need to go look at the money that was already taken and rein in that program specifically because it's using teachers and counselors who are not psychologists to practice psychology on children in group settings in whatever manner they want. And it also uses their own employees, so they get to choose non-licensed healthcare workers. So someone who could be 18 years old with no college, certainly no healthcare experience or education could come in and have a discussion about whatever they want to have a discussion about in a group setting. I know that we already employ psychologists in the school district, which I have mixed feelings about. I think that it has become a way to get ahold of all children and not the children who need it. So instead of going to special needs programs, we're now seeing the direction of these positions becoming broader to address all children. And when you start treating all children in a classroom psychologically, we're not teaching, for one, they're not learning reading, writing, and math. But secondly, what are you hoping to accomplish by practicing on these children? So we need to really seriously look at strict policy about what types of things can be practiced. I know that there are things that I can't do under my license and I can't say to a patient, so why in the world are we allowing people to practice healthcare when they don't have a license? And the special interest groups, we just need to say no. And we need to work on our budget so that we're not desperate for money.
So how would you work with the superintendent and the administration to take a proactive approach rather than reactive approach?
I think we need to view the superintendent as a significant team member and we need to develop a trusting relationship with them where we can have frank and honest conversations because administration often makes a lot of choices and we don't, as the board members say, it kind of comes at the end where the decisions already been made. A good example would be curriculum. You know, the board is presented with two choices. They're basically the same, they have a different price tag, a different, a different name, the education theory's the same. What are we really choosing? You know, are we choosing based off the outcomes? Because I didn't see that in the last meeting. So these things are decided upon by the administration and that relationship can be adversarial and we need to work on how we're going to change that so that these decisions aren't really made in a vacuum and then we're presented with a false choice. How, how to bridge the gap of being adversarial is a tough one, but I think that we can write strong policy to change, for example, how curriculums are chosen and that the board needs to be more involved when we're failing the mega majority of our children.
Very true. I think the same. We need to develop a really good relationship with the superintendent. We need to be asking him a lot of questions about decisions that are made in the district so that we can really understand where they're coming from and why they're choosing certain things and making certain guidelines. And so, yeah, just knowing what the guidelines are even that the school district has put forward would really help us understand how the whole school district is functioning.
Yeah, I agree with all the other candidates up here. I think there's also an aspect of accountability that comes into play that works both ways on that as well. Having the information brought to the school board, but also holding the superintendent and the administrative staff accountable for what was brought to the school board. How did you get their layout, that process to us so we know? I've learned through my career, understanding where we came from is a key component for where we're going. So Kathy's referenced it a few times, going back and reviewing the policies that are already in place and understanding, so you're not caught off guard when somebody comes with a complaint like what happened with the bathroom policy, not understanding that that was even an issue that the school board had addressed in the past. So that's a big thing to me is understanding where we came from, to understand where we're going and having that mutual knowledge and relationship with the administration and the superintendent to be able to have that path forward. Like Kendall said, being able to actually have those frank and honest conversations and discussions and it really works both ways. The superintendent's got to be able to rely on being able to communicate that to the board the same way that we have to communicate with the superintendent.
So I absolutely agree with everything that was said and I also am a really big believer in transparency. And I feel like we need to be transparent with the administration and we need to place a demand on them to be transparent with us and with the community. I feel like a lot of things that have happened in school politics have happened because the administration is separated from everyone else and they haven't been transparent like they could have been. And I feel like that's something we really need to work on to say, "We're not against you, but we all are a team coming together to be able to make this a better school."
Fantastic. So what is the first policy you would work on to close the gaps in educational weakness of valley?
So I am really happy with some of the stuff that has recently come through and I think that some momentum has been built for us to be able to start closing those gaps, getting rid of some of the politics in schools. I really feel like we need to go through all the policies we have with a fine-toothed comb. We need to go through what we have already started and make sure we continue what this current school board has started. And we really need to fix our curriculum is a huge one, but that's going to be a big work in progress. So I think that the big thing would be getting the special interests out of the school. I think that is the first goal.
Just to be honest, I don't know exactly which policies to tackle first. That's one of the big undertakings that needs to happen is review of the full policy. I kind of come at it with this work ethic of the frontline users and utilizers of the system have the best knowledge and information on that stuff. So actually getting out and having those discussions with the frontline teachers that are actually in the classrooms about what's working and what's not. The experience that I've seen watching the school board meetings is, for example, school district employees having to send letters through a third party to the school board because they're afraid of retaliation. Why does that work environment exist in the first place where you're afraid to voice your concerns and opinions to your administration? I think that's a huge red flag that needs to be addressed. But already just the conversations and footwork I've been doing in my campaign, being reached out to by, you know, PE teachers and elementary classroom teachers and special education teachers, voicing their concerns and laying out their issues because they, they either feel not heard by the administration or they're afraid of retaliation by the administration for speaking up. I think that is going to be a huge issue that needs to be addressed.
Right. Yeah, getting back to the policies, we are going to have to just do a lot of research and I have been reading through the board policies and I, as a teacher, as a former teacher, I can see that there's a number of policies that are board policies that I don't know that are really being enforced or... So, so that would come down to the superintendent and I'm sure it'd just be a conversation. Like I see this in board policy and I'm not sure if this is really being followed. So there's a few things like that from reading and also just, you know, I'm really concerned just recently of the CDC's passing of the vaccine schedule for children and I'm really going to be watching. I'm not sure if that's a, in fact, I'm pretty sure that's not a policy that a school board would do, but I'll be hoping that the state can put some kind of policy in line so that children aren't required to have the COVID vaccine, which has just, just happened today through the CDC. So, but I, I'm under the impression that the states can, can make policies of their own regarding whether or not they have to follow the CDC's guidelines for things like that. So those kinds of things I'll be really watching for.
I think in terms of education loss and our poor peak scores, I want to really look at the K through three window for policies if I had to pick somewhere to start because studies have shown if you're behind in third grade in reading, you're not going to catch up by the time you graduate. So we already know that 60 to 70% are behind in fourth grade, presumably behind in third grade. We need to create policies and make sure they're, if they're already in existence, they're being enforced. For example, some schools are still not allowing one-on-one time with parent volunteers or retired educators to help kids read. And we know that if you're trying to read out loud a difficult book and someone's next to you talking, you're probably not going to read as well, while neither are children who can't understand what they're reading. So enforcement is a big issue, making sure that the policies are in place, that we're not going to just hold COVID policies forever. I think there was a ton of policies, COVID, we just need to get rid of. There's no reason to hang on to those at this point. They didn't work. Another thing is watching that, I'm extremely passionate about parental choice. No one knows your child like you and it's your job to take them to a healthcare provider and have that private discussion with them of whatever your choice is going to be. We know that less than 3% of parents have chosen to vaccinate their children under five. So we need to seriously look at if we can make a policy if the state isn't going to say something about it and encourage everybody to call and pressure them, but that we can make a policy saying, "We're not going to kick you out of school or you're not forced into homeschooling if you make a parental choice that's best for your child."
Thank you. So that being said, what are, what are your views on allocating education funding in your district so that the money follows the child?
If I had my way and could wave a magic wand, all the money would follow the child wherever it went. And that would be for whatever kind of curriculum the parent chose or whatever charter school, a private school, religious school, if I could have my way. I think that it's really interesting that the correspondence programs get a lot less money and yet a lot of that money goes to a school district. And yet a lot of that money goes to a school district, which is to serve what? My children, for example. We homeschooled because my daughter was going to enter school in fall of 2020 for the first time. And I knew she wasn't going to learn how to read with a mask on. And so it's interesting that the school district gets a huge portion of the funds and we're expected to teach with a tiny amount. And we can see that if you look at budgets, how things get spent everywhere but the classroom. And there's a huge amount of money that gets spent on the administration level. And why is that? We really need to look at, are we an upside down triangle where a penny goes to the classroom where all the work is being done that is our mission? And all the rest of the money is at the top? I mean, that's just not acceptable to me. So anyway, that's how I feel about that.
Could you save questions?
Yeah.
Let me find it.
No, you're great.
Oh, golly. What are your views on allocating education funding in your district so that the money follows?
I don't really understand the in your district thing.
Well, let's just talk.
Are you thinking that it could be separate by district to district?
Well, no.
No, okay.
But there is a subsequent question that will be asked.
Oh, okay. Well, I completely agree that I think that the best way to solve a lot of problems in education is for the taxpayer money to follow each child. Because again, yeah, a lot of money is spent on different things like administration and such. But I do believe that that's what true school choice is about. Is allowing people to choose the type of school that matches their child's best interest. And I believe that if that actually happened, we would have more competition, which I believe is a good thing, in schools. So a school that is really doing a phenomenal job, the kids are having high scores, more people would want to go to that school. And hopefully that would encourage other schools to become that way also. And I just have never really understood why we don't model after a really good school. And I think competition would cause that to happen, so.
I was going to ask the same clarifying question because all of my kids are boundary exempt, so.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with both Kathy and Kendall said, especially when it comes to the homeschool choice or private school choice. I walked through that while I was in high school personally and watching how the money was utilized to help offset the parents' cost. And then we have also homeschooled our kids from time to time as well during COVID and some other times. And it's very, very interesting to see how much gets skimmed off when you make that choice to do it yourself. And you're the ones putting in all the work and effort. I mean, essentially every mom is a teacher 24/7 to their kids. So yeah, anything that we can do to help boost that would be in support of it.
I fully agree that the money should follow the child. I have noticed out here in the Valley that one of the things that people say when they're against that is, well, we have plenty of options because we have charter schools and we have all these things. But they don't realize that all of those schools are also in the school district's pocket. That teachers are hired from the same school district as our public school system. You don't truly have anything outside of the Mattsu Borough School District here that is receiving funding. And I will never forget sitting in a meeting for one of our special education meetings, being reminded that we had to do all of our paperwork exactly correctly. Because every special education student was worth an extra, I don't remember the exact number, it was somewhere around $50,000 per student more than the other students. Yet when I homeschool my special education child and I have to fill out all of the IEP forms myself and I have to fill out everything and do all of the educating, I get $2,500 a year. So I feel like if parents want to go and homeschool their own kids, they need the finances to do that. If they want to enroll them in a public school, if they want to go to fire dance, if they want to do any of that, they should be able to pay for that without having to sacrifice a huge amount of money that's going to the district for that child already.
Thank you. So your district is our district. It's just the way that the question was posed.
Yeah, okay.
So how should the district address underperforming schools? I think Kathy might have touched on it a bit, but how would you as a body address underperforming schools?
Well, first things, we need to make sure that the curriculum is something that's working for the teachers and the students. You can't give a teacher a scripted curriculum, say, don't deviate from it, and then blame the teacher if it's not working. We need to empower our teachers to be able to teach. Also, we need to have some sort of system of correction and support. So in my classroom, if I have 30 students and I have four students that are on an IEP and they're running around my classroom yelling and screaming and throwing things, the first thing they say is, what are you doing as a teacher to correct that? That student's not getting disciplined, that the parents aren't getting called. I'm supposed to correct that. I'm supposed to teach everything. I'm supposed to make sure that my classroom is running smoothly. And if my kids fail, it's on me as a teacher. But I'm not given the support that I'm supposed to have. So I feel like our teachers need to be better supported. They need to be listened to. And we need to have a better curriculum in order to support those teachers. And then if a school is failing, we need to look at why. We need to see why are we failing and bring correction to that.
Yeah, again, with interfacing with the frontline workers and utilizers of the system. And there's also that level of accountability for the superintendent. Going back and pulling historical data and creating some graphs on a PowerPoint presentation is all fine and dandy. But when you've got a school that is presented as running the base of that graph for several years on hand, we as a school board need to be questioning the superintendent and the administration. Why are these other schools inching up and we've got one school that's running flat along the bottom? Why is that happening? Curriculum is a huge thing. And the change up of curriculum last minute, I've personally experienced with teachers that have had their lesson plans all put together and suddenly they get switched from one grade to another grade a couple of days before school starts. You know, how are you supposed to prepare when you invested all your work and your effort into teaching second or third grade? And all of a sudden you're put in charge of fifth grade on a moment's notice. So I think a lot of that comes down to the accountability of the administrators of the schools, administrators of the schools. But we as a school board need to address that through the superintendent and the school district administration. And I don't see any reason in demanding perfection from the superintendent and the school district administration as a whole. That's what I demand of my children is perfection. You guys can shoot for the stars and we're going to raise that bar and hold you accountable to that bar. Because you can be as great as you want to be. And the school district needs to do that with our kids as well. We need to do that with the administration as a school board. We need to demand perfection of them. That way, if they do fall short of that, they're still going to be far above everything else.
Yeah, so I did address this a little bit. Underperforming schools, it's well known usually which ones are the most underperforming in the district. Parents even know, you know, that's why we have boundary exempts. People pull their kids from certain schools for things like that. And I've always felt strongly that the schools that are really at the top of the pile should be modeled more after them. We have a couple of schools in this district that consistently do well. And those schools should be a model for the other schools. Like what are they doing at that school that is so good? And so I really believe that we need to encourage the superintendent to look at that kind of thing and just think. I don't think there's a teacher out there that wouldn't be thrilled if their class was one of the best performing classes. So we also need to ask teachers what they need. And I believe that teachers want to do well. There's not teachers out there that are just, I don't want to do well. They want to. So I really think that we need to talk to them and see what they need and get the resources for some of these people. There's a lot of brand new teachers that really are overwhelmed and don't know what to do. I've worked with a lot of new teachers that just need some help in their classroom. And you can't always do that with aides and things. People think we have aides in our classroom. We don't. I mean, that's not how it works. But you can make groups of teachers that work together. And I do think that even though the Monday issue is not a welcome plan across the community, I don't think. The idea of it is trying to improve teachers. And so if we could do that as well as model after higher performing schools, I really think we could increase in addition to the school competition thing, you know? It's not a bad thing to have competition. I really believe that.
I agree with everything that Kathy just said.
We all agree.
Yeah.
We're not running against each other, that's the problem.
I think that we do need to increase competition. I think that one of the big challenges is we change curriculum constantly. So every six years, we're changing a curriculum and they have to learn a whole new system. And now it's, half of it's digital. And some of that is the parents' responsibility to do at home. And I've sat in on the iMath training for parents. And there was a lot of parents on there who were frustrated because they didn't understand the system and what they were supposed to do with their kids at home and why they weren't getting it done at school. And that their children were already playing video games in the background instead of getting their work done at school and at home. And the language arts that was just approved, that was a six-year cycle. And we need to really look at why we're purchasing curriculums that suddenly the business disappears and we can't get the supplies. And we're spending millions of dollars on these curriculums that just disappear. When there are curriculums that have been around before 20, 30, 40, 50 years and they're at the high performing schools that are doing great. So why aren't we looking at these inexpensive curriculums that we know down the road, we can see they're doing well by our children? And using that for our kids across the board. And then we have a school full of teachers who can train the other teachers. And so the training time would be better. Even if we saved on not having to do a cycle every six years of learning all new curriculum and all new materials and modalities. I mean, that right there would save the teachers a ton of time and frustration. And it would make the school year start off better. I think that would really improve our system and encouraging teachers to train from each other and not be frustrated when a school's doing well to have to go there. And.
I don't know if you are, but I keep seeing that sign.
That's okay, we'll take it. So we've heard you talk a lot about competition and how that can be an effective tool. So do you believe in merit-based teacher compensation?
Wow, that's a really good question. As a teacher of many years, I would have loved that. I would have loved that. And really, in free market, I mean, that's how it is. I mean, and really, it should be. I feel like it's a dream that it would be really difficult to do, just there'd be a lot of fights to it. But I really believe that if someone is performing far better than someone next door to them, why should they get equal pay? I mean, that doesn't happen in the real world. So yeah, I do believe that in an ideal world, that would be fabulous. It would be difficult to implement because of all different kinds of situations. It would almost have to be like a three-year average as far as your outcomes. Because, you know, one year can just be a, you can have a difficult group or something like that. But there are teachers that consistently every year get really good results. Why are those teachers not getting something for that?
Well, it should be last. You were last last time.
I'm always a proponent of rewarding good diligent work. I manage a crew of anywhere between 20 to 29, 30 people. Unions and CBAs obviously have a hand in that kind of stuff. I think more of an approach of merits off of the school as a whole. I think about elementary school, middle school, high school. And those grades need to progress and the teachers need to work together from kindergarten all the way through fifth grade for the elementary schools to get performance each of those years. And so holding the school administrator responsible to manage his school or her school in a way that if they are one of the top performers, there can be compensation handed out that way. That would create the school competition as well. And really help teachers collaborate more together, I think, to progress the kids through the grades in a better way.
Yeah, I agree that that would be really good to have a school-wide thing. A lot of the lower 48 school systems have awards that they give out. I've never understood why we don't really do that big teacher of the year thing here. I mean, we don't put a lot of emphasis on those kind of things. And I feel like we could be creative. It would take a lot of creativity to implement something. But we could be creative and reward those teachers, whether it be through an award. Maybe we have some sort of cash bonus or an extra day off, an extra paid day off. I mean, we could find a way to reward teachers and I think that would be a good idea.
I don't think there's anything wrong with meritocracy. I think that we should reward people who do well. I mean, we give children grades that when they do well, they get a great grade. If they do well in AP, they get college credit. So while we're practicing that with the children in the classroom, we're not doing that. We're making everyone be the same pot as far as the teachers go. So I think it would be great to see them get raises when they do well.
So I just want to touch on something that Mr. Butler had brought up into the conversation is the.
Butcher.
Butcher, I'm so sorry. My mind's rattling off here, sorry about that. Is the collective bargaining agreements as well as the unions. Where do you stand? Do you think they've been effective or ineffective? And how would you go about changing that relationship?
Well, I think that transparency is a big issue there. I was personally asked if I supported not looking at the specific agreements. Whether or not as a school board member, if I would just not look at the agreement specifically or line by line and just agree or not agree. And that question concerns me. I think that any taxpayer dollar should be transparent. It's what are we hiding? You know, you shouldn't be hiding something. And we shouldn't be behaving like we're hiding something. So if it's all great and good and good programs and the money's being spent well, then that's, we can show that to the taxpayers and they would be pleased to see that. I've never negotiated with a union to say that I know the details of that. But I think that the more transparency we have and the more understanding of what those negotiations are really like and where the money's going, the better.
This is my question, Pam. Okay, it's, yeah, it's not a secret that I have actually worked at helping teachers opt out of the union. Before we had the opportunity to opt out, we were required forced unionization. And I really don't agree with that at all. I don't believe that anybody should be forced to join a union to do the job they love. So for years and years, I was a union member and didn't agree with it. And many teachers have no idea that they pay $1,000 a year to the union and don't receive any benefits other than their negotiations, the contract agreements. And some union members or groups have actually opted the whole, like for instance, the Westlau Police Department, the whole group removed themselves from the union and formed their own union. And I believe that teachers could make their profession so much better if they did that and negotiated for themselves. I believe, I don't believe at all in spending a penny of my money to go to the NEA. And a lot of the teachers' union dues go to the NEA to support causes that many teachers in this borough, and I know this, absolutely don't agree with, the political and social things. So I could talk about unions for a long time. And I do believe that. I have 30 seconds. I do believe that it actually hurts the teaching profession. Because it makes all the teachers on the same playing field. And they protect teachers that aren't doing a good job. And we don't help those teachers that really are doing well. we don't help those teachers that really are doing well. So there's, there's a lot to say about that.
Well said.
Thank you.
I've got a little different take on that because by happenstance, I was a member of the Wasilla Police Department Union. When they were Teamsters, I was part of the process of being able to unionize. I have utilized the services of unions and collective bargaining agreements as an employee in the past. When you have a fractured administration, that stuff can come in very handy to help progress your career and create a safe and productive work environment. So I think there is a time and a place for a union. I also feel that the Janus decision was one of the best things to happen because that was what created a mechanism for us to opt out of paying union dues, which ultimately resulted in us being able to form our own employee association, just like Kathy was talking about. That was a very, very, very good thing that happened for the department and the employees there. I have been part of contract negotiations for six contracts now. We're actually in the middle of a union contract negotiation where I work now. So I rely heavily on the ins and outs of the contracts, being able to go back and read through them line by line. It's amazing the things that you find in historical documents that are still at play now that have just been either forgotten about or brushed under the carpet, but actually being able to hold to those written contracts is very, very important. I don't think there'll ever come a day where the public work environment will not see unions. So it's best to figure out how to navigate that and work together and around it for the best interest of everybody.
So I've had a lot of experience with our unions out here, just working in special education. Our administration isn't always supportive of the staff and staff do fear for their jobs if they speak out against anything, if they're injured at work. There are a lot of ways you can lose your job out here and be blacklisted from the school district. And so the union is important in order to protect from that. The problem is that our CEA and our NEA have stopped protecting teachers, they've stopped doing their jobs, and they have jumped into all kinds of politics. They're pushing for the critical race theory, they're pushing for all these candidates that are just really pushing a lot of things that we don't want to see in our schools. So they've stepped away from doing what they should do and they have stepped into many things they have no business being involved in. So I do not support our current NEA and CEA. I feel like it would be awesome if our teachers could separate and build something to support themselves. But for right now, with our administration, until that's repaired, they need some protection in place. I don't know how we resolve that, but that would be high on my priority list.
Okay. Well, you actually touched, basically on the next question, and I think you pretty much answered it, what and how do you intend to either condemn or promote the NEA?
So if we could get people in, represented in the NEA, that if we could replace some of the people that are in there right now and get them to return to their origins of supporting teachers and protecting them, I would love to promote that. I feel like, you know, everybody's redeemable, but changes have to be made. So if they're willing to turn things around, turn away from all the politics they're involved in and get back to supporting teachers, I think we should do that. But I really think that right now, the whole system is kind of in a place where it needs to be pulled down and we need to get a better system in place.
Yeah, I agree. Breaking things down and getting back to the fundamentals, transparency is a big thing for me, especially when it comes to the public sector and government operations. It's the taxpayer dollars that are funding it and the taxpayers have, they have the right to know what's happening. So to have all these smoke and mirrors and things hidden and brushed under the rug is just, it's extremely inappropriate in my view. The people have a right to have a transparent government. I mean, it's even, it's addressed very well under Alaska Statute of the Meetings Act introduction, that it's the people's government and they have a right to know. So, yeah, that's where I stand on that.
Right. So the MSEA is the teachers' union, that's the Matsu Education Association, and they are affiliated with the NEA. Now, I don't know, I would say, could they actually leave the NEA? I don't know that the MSEA depends on belonging to the NEA, other than they give a lot of the money that they collect from their members to the NEA and, and I don't know if that's a requirement or if they could form their own MSEA that's not connected to the NEA. So that would maybe be something to even consider, I've never really even thought of that. But I know that many, many people, well, the community as a whole, would not support what the NEA is outwardly standing for. I mean, they, they are very blatant about it these days. So if teacher, and I think maybe even a lot of teachers aren't aware of those things since they're busy teaching, so they're not watching all of that.
My feelings mirror Kathy's. I think that the things nationally that are going on at the NEA are borderline despicable. I mean, it's just crazy. We have spoken up as a community, the majority doesn't want what, what the social stigmas and patterns that they're trying to push on children and we need to represent that interest. I think it's, it's funny to talk to people that say, parents should have no say in curriculum, but a union can tell you what curriculum that's not academic or core subject to put in there. I think that we need to look at encouraging teachers to speak up and knowing what their rights are, that they don't have to belong if they don't want to, that they are, their insurance is covered by the district, they aren't dependent upon the NEA, which I know is something that was said.
I didn't understand that.
But I would love to see them form their own group and have it be more of a representation of our community and less of a representation of what people who live in Washington DC that have never been to the Matsu and will never come to the Matsu think that we should force on our children and our families.
Okay. Well, let's shift gears before we go out to the audience. What are the educational strengths in this district?
I saw a really awesome program that was hunter safety for kids. And I thought it was the, as a hunter, I thought that was absolutely amazing. I have been trying to seek out different programs at the schools in our district. Like there was one with the fire department recently, Wasilla High School, that I thought was amazing. I saw quilts being made for the homeless in our community. There are all sorts of amazing learning opportunities. There was a culinary class also recently that I thought was fascinating, where they're engaging members of our community that are professionals in their trade and having them come into the classroom and do a really intensive lesson. And I think there are great skills that we can access from our community, engage our community, engage parents, that really interest children. I think that we're doing a really great job of getting those, those connections back going after COVID. And I would love to see more and more and more at every school, not just a few, and how we can support that.
So I know there's some really excellent things going out, going on in this district. I see teachers at many schools that I've stopped in and are known teachers that are just working hard every single day and doing the right thing. So when we hear of the crazy stuff that's going on, that's not everywhere, that's absolutely not everywhere. There are teachers that go to work every day and just are getting the job done and I know many of them personally. I also know there's particular schools, like we mentioned, that are just amazing models. Like I did have the opportunity to tour Academy Charter School just recently and I, for 30 years, or 20 years, I think, I think they've been open 25 years, been amazed at how they are continually the top of the pool in the valley and why are we not looking to see what exactly is happening at that school and why is it working so well? So that's what I meant by modeling after these schools that are really getting it done. So, and I know, I know as a teacher that, you know, the basic skills, the phonics programs, the basic math programs at the, at the early elementary really sets people up for success. We need to, we need to look back at those programs that are working well and really try to duplicate them more across the district. So there's some really great things going on and, and I think a lot of those little programs are things that are happening over there at Academy and bringing kids to want to go to school also, those types of things, like the fire safety program at Wasilla High, that can bring kids there that might otherwise not be interested in school. So those are all good pluses.
Yeah, I think the, the teachers are one of the greatest strengths in the school district right now. We have become very good friends with all of our kids' elementary school and middle school teachers. High school starts to get a little different because you're shifting responsibility onto the high schooler to take care of themselves. But, yeah, all the teachers are just, have been so dedicated to our kids. Part of that also plays into the parent choice, though, is a huge benefit to this district and especially the way that the Matsu Borough and the school board are moving right now for alternative school options, charter schools and homeschools and things like that. I agree with Kendall that the, kind of the vocational education opportunities, like the fire program. I actually had a hand in Career Tech developing a 901 and Dispatch module and I've been seeing a lot of schools down in the States that are actually doing internships for 901 and Dispatch. It's a heavy technology and heavy computer use job and that's what the up-and-coming generation is born into these days. So actually taking that technology and their ability to manipulate numerous systems and giving them a foundation for a career right out of high school is extremely important. And so I think the district's doing really good on those fronts.
One of my favorite things about this district is the way that we have set up so many alternative and charter schools. There seems to be something for everyone. So we have, for Shell is, they have two different programs over there. One of them is a credit recovery program. So if students were out for COVID-19 or they're out for any other reason, they can go in there, they can catch up on all their credits and still graduate on time. Then you have the new Connect Charter School that opened and they're working their schedules around hunting and fishing seasons. And we have the Matsu Bay School, which a lot of people haven't heard of, because we don't expel students for bad behavior anymore, once they reach a certain point, they actually go there and it's a lockdown facility where they rehabilitate behaviors and then send them back into the school system when they're successful. I mean, we just have an option for everyone. We have Valley Pathways, we have Career Tech. So wherever children are at, you can homeschool or you can find a good option where they're going to fit into the school district. And I think that our school district's been really creative in creating those programs and making sure that everybody has a place that they can be educated.
Fantastic. Well, I think we can all agree, we've got some really quality candidates here. So I'd like to open it up to questions from all of you.
Touched on one of my favorites, trade school versus college. Many kids are really clueless what they want to do under 17, 18. I know I was. I would hope we give the kids the tools, but no pushing, that they have to, that we've done where you have to go to college. What are your thoughts? And then secondly, second, the money follows the kid without, what I would like to see is, money follows the kid where we don't have, you don't have to then pay property taxes, which is 6% of the education, plus your private school costs. Your thoughts?
Okay, so with the trade schools, I am fully on board with that. I feel like it should be a good option. Not everybody knows what you want to do. So if we have more options for trade schools and things that can be accessed in high school, then students don't have to worry as much about how they're going to pay for those things straight out of high school. Our current school system is set up for a college track and we are starting to get more things like Career Tech, which is amazing, but there's only enough to serve a small amount of the population. So most kids don't have that option. And I feel like if that, if those things can be implemented in the regular high schools and students can just start to experience, hey, do I like welding? Do I like electrician stuff? Do I like, I mean, what do I like? They could just start testing it out, then you're going to have more kids that are going to say, hey, I really like this and I'm going to go into trade school. And maybe we can help them get a good start in life by covering that in high school. As far as the tax question, I'm not entirely sure what you're asking there.
Well, you're paying, if you're, if you're homeschooling or you're sending a kid to a private school, you're paying for that and you're paying the taxes for the schools, for the public schools. So you're paying a double whammy.
So you're saying, instead of getting a big check, we would just not pay taxes for our schools to, or how to...
If the money follows the kid, you get, you get X amount of money and, but you don't have to worry about what it's not. You understand?
Yes. I definitely don't think you should be double-billed for that by having to pay it in property taxes and then, you know, I, I feel like the money should follow the kid, but it does have to come from somewhere. So that's where those school taxes come in. And I think that's a really complicated subject because if you take that money away from taxes, then where do the public schools, where kids still are going, get their funding? So I think that you have to find a creative way to fund all of it and I don't think there's a really easy answer to that.
Anybody else want to speak on that?
Are you asking?
Candidates, please, anybody else wants to...
Oh, you want Sol to speak about it? Or was he just asking her?
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Hold on, hold on. Does anybody else of the candidates want to speak on that?
Yeah, I will. I'm a huge supporter of trade. You know, I'm looking at, I've been spending a lot of time comparing my junior high and high school experience to what my kids are going through now. I'm seeing the college credit increase where my middle schoolers are having to start digging into high school credits and middle school, just to be able to graduate on time. I'm also seeing things like late start Mondays and 4C's classes, which are being added. And I don't, I'm having a hard time figuring out what my child is accomplishing and learning in the 4C's class. I was blessed to have a kid that strived to be his class president for his school and actually won that election here last week. So that's what he's going to be spending his 4C's time doing is networking with his school representatives. Yeah. But taking those opportunities, instead of having, what, I'm seeing a lot of wasted time and time away from instruction. And you could even substitute those 4C's class with whether it be construction, skilled building, or plumbing, or electrician, or welding, or, or things like that. I mean, my, my best friend in high school took a welding class at Colony and he went on to become a welding inspector. You know, it's stuff like that, that, hey, try your hand at this, this is really cool. I think I want to get into this long-term and make a lot of money doing it. On the other hand, I'm seeing nothing against colleges, if that's what you want to do, but you go and spend how much money for college for a piece of paper to hang on your wall and then you become a customer service rep at a telecom company because you can't afford your, your student debt with the degree that you have and the job that you entered. So I'm a huge supporter of that.
I just want to say one really quick thing there, too. I do, I have seen some amazing things, even at Wasilla High School, they are really in the process of developing this whole internship-type program with electricians and plumbers and they have a Kubota simulator so kids can learn how to drive a forklift. I mean, they've got a lot going on there, so it's not just like a Career Tech high school where a lot of people are hearing it. But what's wrong with even college-minded kids learning a trade that maybe they could work a little bit while they're going to college or, or just have something to fall back onto? Right. So, so having more skills is always better. And then the tax thing, Mike, I just want to say, probably there's a lot of people that don't have kids at all that are paying taxes.
I absolutely agree with Kathy, I'll probably say that a lot more. I think that if you can read and write and articulate well, you are deadly. So what we need to be focused on is that our children have those skills and they can go do anything if they're actually prepared. What we have is they go to UAA and they take, they spend money on a year of high school education remedial work. And I think that's absolutely disgraceful. We're adding to their debt and their burden in life because we aren't getting the job done before they leave. How are they going to know what they want to do if they're not even prepared to write a college paper? If you don't write reports for work, almost everybody does that, even in trades. If you don't write reports for work, almost everybody does that, even in trades, you need to have basic skills to be able to go do anything. So we need to nail that down and that starts with the young years. If you can read at the end of kindergarten, you're probably going to do really well. If you're not reading well by the end of first grade, you're going to struggle the rest of your time. And we can fix children not wanting to go to school if they were doing well. Kids who don't do well, they don't want to be there and it makes it that much harder. I love trades. My husband builds hospitals and clinics all over the state and we have a lot of friends who are in the, in trade work and there is a huge shortage of that. So we need people who are going to be interested in alternative, alternatives to college. And secondly, yeah, I don't think that you should pay tax if your children aren't going to school and if you're homeschooling your kids, you're taking the financial burden, why are you paying for someone else's education?
We have some other, we'll start here and move our way up.
First, thank you all for choosing to run and hopefully choosing to serve. It makes a huge difference to be able to volunteer your time and talents for, to get a lot of abuse. And I certainly hope you get more reward than abuse out of it. But a couple of you mentioned being able to reward outstanding performers, which I think is great from the school district side of things, but in the teaching side of things, we don't have that same opportunity for our children. You know, if we take a look, for instance, at the Career and Technical High School, it was built, you know, for exceptional performers, for kids that had proved that they could work on their own, that they could work towards things, that they could accomplish goals. And now it's gone into a lottery system where exceptional performers are no longer rewarded by having that opportunity to do that. And the same is true with other programs throughout the school district. Do you think there should be an opportunity or as much opportunity toward, to reward exceptional performers as there are opportunities to bring up those persons who are not performing?
I absolutely think that we should be rewarding the performers. I also learned that some of our charters have huge wait lists. You know, like Academy Charter has 250 children on a wait list every year and it's a lottery system. That's almost the same as their enrollment for their school. You could double the size of their school and those kids could get in. And I think that we don't have, well, we have a lot of choice, like we've talked about, we have a lot of choices. There are people who want to get into those programs that don't ever get in. And we should look at how we expand that, you know, the waivers that we're talking about, going to those good schools. If there are children who want to go there that don't get in, I think that's a tragedy. We should be looking at expanding those programs that are doing well and helping the kids go on to there and the parents choose that. And if there's programs where it's, the best performers get to go, that's how the world works. You get a raise at a job because you did something great. It's not, it's not an even playing field in the rest of the world. So we should be modeling for our children what the real world is like when they graduate because that's what they're going into.
So Stu, I know what you're saying about the Career Tech High School. They had a completely different model when they first started where kids had to apply to go there, they had to interview, they had to show that they were, you know, worthy basically of going to that school. And then they had really high standards at the school in general. And I'm not exactly positive, I have to admit that. Why they switched to the lottery plan, I believe it probably had something to do with this being a public school system, you know, so they can't just act like a private school when they're not. But I really don't understand why they didn't keep their high standards. Like, just because kids are going there on a lottery doesn't mean it has to change the whole dynamics of the school. And I think that has happened, that I've heard from a lot of different parents who are really disappointed now and were very happy before. So I just, I think that that probably is something that needs to be looked at, like why didn't they keep those standards? And then if kids didn't want to go there, they didn't have to because it is a choice school. So, you know, like if kids don't like what's happening at American Charter or Academy Charter, they can go to a different school. So they could have kept that level of expectation, I think, at Career Tech. So yeah, I do agree that kids that are performing well should, should have some benefits to that.
So yes, that's actually something that I have been working on in the school district is our students, they, so the best way I can tell you about it is my 12-year-old. My 12-year-old completed ninth grade courses last year. He's in homeschool, I was able to do that. He's always been two to three grade levels ahead. And in elementary school, he had teachers that would work with him. They would never bump him up a grade because our district's against that and I don't understand why. But they would just keep him in the classroom with his age group and then he'd have to do his age group's work and the teacher would have to scramble and give him something to keep him busy. So when he hit middle school and they would no longer do that, he would get bored out of his mind. And so I pulled him out and I had to homeschool him because he's just not going to fit in with kids his age when he's two or three grade levels ahead. So this year, I'm working on advanced chemistry with him and algebra two. And he is still not getting high school credit because he's supposed to be in seventh grade. So we really hold kids back in our district and I really feel like that's something that needs to be changed. I do understand that with, with our public schools, we have to have a lottery system because if they're receiving public funding, that's something that has to be in place. And there was a public outcry over that and I think that's really unfortunate because Career Tech gave students something to strive for. It was, if I'm doing really, really good, I'm getting these great grades, I can get into the school. And I feel like students that were there had a better resolve and they had more commitment because they were being challenged and they had to earn their way in. And that's been lost and that's unfortunate.
Hi. I've been watching the woke agenda, that's what I like to call it, being pushed and infiltrating into our school systems on a very regular basis. The bathroom issue's been one that was just recently brought up at the school board here. You guys made mention that basically $1,000 per teacher is being paid to the unions. Did the math, that's about $20 million a year of Alaska's teachers' earnings going to an organization that pushes very far left-leaning causes. One of them in this current election is going to be for the Constitutional Convention. $500,000 of that money was donated towards the No campaign. Recently, in the Anchorage School District, it has been brought to all of our attentions at the Tuesday school board meeting that they just had there. A parent brought to the attention of the school board that the woke agenda is being pushed at a kindergarten, mid-level school, and high school level. And the book was called, the book, this book is gay. And I'm just going to slightly read just a little bit that is written here. Cover your ears if you're sensitive.
No, don't do it.
Okay. What are you guys as a school board willing to do to prevent this type of material from infiltrating into the Matsue School District Borough's area and so that we are actually teaching reading, writing, and arithmetic and not the woke agenda that's being pushed on us all?
Well, unfortunately, it already is in our schools. It's in our libraries, it is curriculum. We say that we're not a Common Core district, but you look at our math books and they say Common Core on the cover. I mean, it's there. So the big challenge is getting it out now that it's there, getting it out of our schools. And I think that a lot of people have accepted it so that they could have the funding. And we're going to have to be able to make those tough decisions and say, we are going to say no to funding because we're not putting that in our schools. And that's going to challenge a lot of people because we have to say, where does our money come from if we say no to that? But we have to be courageous enough to do that and I really think that everybody sitting here is willing to do that.
Absolutely, adamantly against injecting that sort of workload onto the schools, the teachers, and trying to instill that in our kids. That's the parent's job, that's the family's job. The school district responsibility is the core foundation of reading, writing, arithmetic. I always throw history and civics in that as well. School district has no place trying to teach my children how to think or what to believe or what to follow politically. Yeah.
Right. So that is really tricky because we'll probably be called book banners or book burners or whatever, but I really think that a book like that, and I did read it, Bert, the passage, if Bert himself or Politic actually handed that book to a child, he'd probably be arrested. It is, it is that explicit. So I question why anybody would think that that was a good thing to have in a school library. You know, with access now, I mean, if a kid wants to order that book on Amazon and their parents don't know or their parents want them to, that's, that's different. But having it in a public library, to me, I'm just going to, that's not right. It's not right to have that where a parent may not know their child is reading that book. And a parent should know about explicit sexual things like that.
That book had been checked out 38 times?
Yeah, yeah. It had been checked out in an elementary school.
38 times?
I think that we have allowed our schools and libraries in particular to go really rogue from the Alaska statutes that govern sex ed. Anything to do with sex, gender, sexuality, the biological act of sex was supposed to be regulated heavily and with a two-week, all the curriculum out there for parents to access and opt out. And what we have now is that sex is being discussed constantly. Even if you're using the grammatically incorrect pronoun, you're referencing your sexuality. So every time a teacher or someone like that is using that incorrectly, that's a reference to sexuality. And you're supposed to give all the curriculum, everything that's going to be discussed, everything that's going to happen, two weeks period for the parents to opt out, and they're not following the laws. Now, there is an act in 1970 that was passed federally that allows pornography to be used in schools. And it's absolutely shocking that you can look it up. And it was started out so that police officers could investigate child pornography cases and the Libraries Association and the Department of Ed added themselves on it last minute. So we have a battle federally that has to be waged because of that. And it, that's why you can't sue over it, for example. So what we need to do is create really sound, strict policy about the sex education where it's being used and look through the libraries and poll those books. It's not appropriate. It is gross and it is strange that an adult would want to have that conversation and read that with a child in itself. We need to look at that as well.
So we have just one more question for the AP and we're going to move into the next one.
Well, I was just going to ask, what kind of ideas do you have that could help our district to rise up in the area of reading and academic performance? I've been a teacher myself and so we always had the Iditarod reading program, we had the grandparents program, the kids that are older going into younger grades, so the kids that are younger can read, the older kids can monitor and help. You know, I mean, there's so many ways to develop reading. And I myself went through that whole Lyndon Moot Bell program and I saw the students that I had, you know, jump one or two grades in their reading academically. So I saw the success of that. But I've been through the libraries. It's all comic book-based and fantasy reading and it has nothing to do with the reality and truth. And I would love to see our constitution being taught, you know, and different elements of our, of truth and the foundation of our nation. You know, memorization, you know, elocution, just memorizing, reading, building up the memory bank, you know, instead of everyone having to go to college to finally get their remedial reading program. I mean, to me, it's very sad. So what kind of, so what, okay, question again, that's what I started out with. So what ideas do you have that you can present as school board to our district to help raise a higher level of reading performance?
So I love this question and I'm so glad that you asked it. I am a firm believer in phonics, traditional or Spalding method. I think they both work, they both work great. The schools using it in our district have great readers, 89% proficient or above proficient on their PEAKS testing. I think we need to look at the curriculum, that is an educational theory called whole-word reading, that is failing our kids since it was introduced in every school that switched from phonics to whole-word curriculums, they've steadily gone down. We need to get the grandparents program, I love, and Iditarod Read, those were great programs. I think we need to get those back in. I'm a huge advocate that we need parents, retired educators coming in and doing one-on-one reading with kids. I think those two things by themselves would be amazing, but you know, it's going to take some changes in curriculum, it takes teacher training to learn the Spalding method or traditional phonics, but it would be money well spent and our children would do phenomenally. It's so much easier than teaching a child whole-word theory.
Right. I absolutely agree with that. And I am familiar with the Lyndon Moot Bell that you talked about and it's very closely tied to the Spalding phonics. And I know that the district believes that because in the past few years, they've had committees where they've been working on early childhood, like kindergarten, first, second grade reading. And one of the suggestions was phonics. And actually, one of the suggestions was to train all the primary teachers in Spalding phonics, but at that time, it was determined too costly. And so they, they basically bought the Spalding phonics cards for every primary teacher and passed them out without any training, which we know doesn't really, it's not as effective as it could have been. But they do believe that, they don't, they know that phonics is super important and can really change the projector. So also, I'm really excited about the fact that the legislature just passed the Alaska Reads Act, which is Read by Nine, it was called for a while. So I'm just really interested and I'll be watching that closely to see how that is implemented in our schools.
I agree with Kendall and Kathy on the curriculum is the foundation of improving that stuff. Personal experience in the school district, I mean, my eighth grader just came home today saying that he was learning the constitution in his civics class today. But that's one of the benefits of having parent choice of what school to send your kid to. I've also been on the other side of that, which was what led to our boundary exemptions of checking out a computer after we said not to check out the computer to our kid and having him spend a majority of his day either A, watching movies on that computer or scanning YouTube and coming home with straight As. You know, and take my kid out of that environment, stick him into a school that's not afraid to give him Fs. Obviously. After the Fs started rolling in, you know, it's, I want to go back to the other school. But I think the other part of that, aside from the curriculum, is the board sticking together in a strong front on holding the superintendent and the administration accountable and responsible for, okay, that's great that you guys are branching out into these other projects now, but where are you on the foundation of what our kids need and what have you done to improve that? And I want to see those results and bringing that up on a regular basis of the accountability of the superintendent and the administration to show what progress they've done and what action they've taken to improve that.
So reading is my absolute favorite thing to teach. All of my personal children read by the time they were three years old. I began teaching them phonics early on with a book called Everyday Parent's Guide to Reading. And so when I became a teacher, I brought that in with me. And as a special education teacher, I do get a little bit more room to change up curriculums. And so when children were falling really far behind, they would say, do whatever you can, catch them up. But they would wait until they're really, really far behind. So the beginning of this school year, I got to do some subbing because I knew I was running for school board and I can't accept a teaching contract while doing that. So in my subbing, I spent, my first assignment was a long-term assignment in a reading program. And with COVID, our students fell so far behind in reading that I had fourth graders that could not read. And so one of the things I had to look at is why can't they read? And part of it is the curriculum we're using right now. It's a thing called Hagerty. You can go online and you can look at YouTube videos. And their idea's kind of okay because they're trying to teach some of those phonics, but it's in a really demanding way. It says things like at, say at, and you snap at the kids and they say at. They say at S, sat, and they snap at them and they're supposed to just know. At H, ha. I mean, that's what we're doing. We're just drilling them really quick like that, they're trained so you answer at the snap. And if they miss a lesson, they don't get it. So while they were at home with COVID, they couldn't get any of the building blocks to get them where they need to be now and there's nothing to get them to catch up. So our curriculum is a really huge issue. Other things that we're sticking them on computers. So we're saying, oh, this kid needs intervention, let's just give them a computer. We have to get the computers out of the classroom. We have to get the computers out of the classroom, computers weren't meant to teach 'em, you could do that at home. We want our teachers to teach. So, we really need to get back to the basics, teaching phonics, teaching basic skills.
Perfect. So, I just want you guys all to give them a well-deserved point. And I can't wait to cast my vote. So, we're gonna, so, we're gonna move very, very quickly because I know, you know, we've started at six, we wanna be out of here on time and be respectful. So, we have a couple of things back here that I just need to make sure that you're aware of. We have a handy-dandy voter card that basically shows you all of our candidates. We call it a cheat sheet. So, we also have a petition, if you're willing to sign. It's much like the one that Mayor Edna had at the School of Government condemning Mitch McConnell for his illustrious ads, false ads against our endorsed candidate, Kelly Tamarco. So, with that said, I do believe that we have, and Mike, I'm gonna ask you to keep it right at two minutes. Mike has an announcement, and then we've got an announcement for Ron as well, so, speak quick.
Everybody's probably aware by now that the Matu chapter of AMAC Action is no longer, because I got fired by AMAC. It's turned into a woke cancel culture corporation, Sam. That's basically bottom line. So, that's the bad news. The good news is I'm starting up a statewide organization. Right now, we're calling it the Concerned Conservatives of Alaska. I'm still trying to figure out if I'm gonna be a 501(c)(3), 501(c)(4), or (c)(6), or a PAC, or whatever the heck we're gonna be. But we're going to be going at this, we're gonna go at this strong, we're gonna hit every aspect of our, of our, of our politics, we're gonna get as much education to, to the members on the legislature, our, our, the bills, how to fight, how to go to committee hearings, there's things like that. We're, we're, I'm taking that, what I did, I learned in eight years, and I'm gonna make it even better.
That card is still turning towards seniors.
No, this is all, every 18 and above.
I can't do it, too.
You're on the clock.
Well, first of all, I'm gonna talk about this November election. Before I, before I get started there, you saw these four school board candidates, I cannot tell you how excited, and I cannot tell you how excited I am. We need to get these four people and all of them on the school board to match up with Tom Rooker and Yvonne Lyndon Wood, the Matu school board that will lead the state of Alaska in performance. I'm really excited, so we need to work hard if they need money, if they need people phone-banging for them or waving signs, ask them what they need. This is critical to us. What I'm gonna talk about, I'm coming to find out, this November, we're having two separate elections all on the same day. I think most, most of us are aware of it, but you gotta understand, I realized from church last Sunday, a lot of people came up and, and talked to me, they didn't realize that there were two separate elections, they didn't realize that the Matu boroughs election is not ranked choice, only the state elected is ranked choice. So, when you go into the polls on November 8th, you need to pick up two ballots. We're timing now, make it quick. The plan is, is you'll go in and you'll register in the state register, and they'll give you a little chip. And the next table will be the borough registration table. It's two separate elections, you sign the borough register, and they'll give you a chip. The third table should be where you pick up two ballots. Now, we had, we had 22,000 people in 2020 that voted in the state ballot, but they did not pull a borough ballot. 22,000. 15,000 of that 22,000? Thank you, Kathy. 15,000 of those 22,000 were conservative voters. We have to drive those voters to the poll. They'll vote a state ballot but not a borough ballot. Those 15 conservative voters will make sure that we get these five school board candidates elected. So, it's, it's very important that you tell your friends that there's two separate ballots, and they must vote them both. The borough ballot is not ranked choice, only the state ballot. I went over, okay, I'm good.
I just wanna say on the Matu, on this Conservative Voters Guide, grab, grab, at least one for yourself and take pictures of it, or grab, if you know people, because this covers every district, every, every borough, every state district, and it lets people know, we have so many uninformed friends and neighbors that ask us, and even if they don't ask us, tell them who the conservatives are to vote for, and these guides will help them know when they go to the voting booth, who to vote for. All right. Okay. One more, and we're out.
Well, as Ron said, there are two elections. Has everybody gotten this in the mail yet?
Yes.
Okay. If you haven't, I do have some extras here. And so, I guess that's probably the most important thing. We will not have another assembly meeting until the 22nd of November, and that's when we will certify the election and have our regular assembly meeting. So, I don't know who needs extra time, but I'll give them the last, my minute.
Nobody gets that, I get that. All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. I do think I want Kathy just to remind everybody about the Matu Republican Women's Christmas. It's, it's basically an open house, and so, I just want her to speak about that real quickly just in case, and if you want to attend.
It's still kind of in the planning stages, but we do have a date, December 1st, so put that down on your calendar, December 1st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Affordable Catering. It's right along the Palmer-Wassila Highway, kind of right in the middle between Palmer and Wassila. And it's just an open house, so we want people to just stop in, you know, after work, or come and stay the whole time, or whatever works for your busy schedule. And we're doing it on December 1st so that people can participate in all the other Christmas things that are coming up. And we're hoping to kind of do that together. So, drop in and see us, December 1st.
Yes.
6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it's, it's just an open house, like, we won't have a sit-down dinner or anything like that. So, we'll just have food, snacks, stop in and visit.
Okay. Fantastic. Okay, thanks, everybody, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
All right, my fellow Alaskians, I got something I'm gonna show you here real quick, just so that you can see it. Hopefully, you're hearing me loud and clear, and I've blanked out the other microphone. And, but, this is the first one, this is the voter's card that they were just talking about. This is side number one, I'm gonna hold it up here for a few more seconds before I flip it over, so snap a picture while you can. This is who they're recommending to vote for. And here is side number two, let me see if I can get it to come in focus, that one's got a lot written on that side. Hopefully, you can see it light, nice and clear there. Please, snap a picture, this is who they're recommending to elect in the upcoming election. Side number one was local borough elections. Side number two, that's up there right now, this is on the state level. All right, and now I'm gonna do a quick screen here. Hi, you guys, nice to see you all. Make sure to like and share this video, Facebook squeals on you if you don't. We've got lots of things going on this year. I have two candidate interviews that will be happening next week, and we'll find out what else may happen coming up. If you know of an event that you'd like to see me at, make sure that it gets livestreamed, send me a message, give me a phone call, my number's on the top of this post, and let me know where you'd like to see me. If you haven't gone to our new channel, which is now on Rumble, it's rumble.com backslash Politic. I am Politic everywhere, just spell my name right, you will find me. That's P-O-L-I-T-A-D-I-C-K. And we are currently transferring all of our YouTube videos over to Rumble, it's a long process, they take, they'll tell me it can take days, weeks, or months to get all 350 videos transferred over onto Rumble. And while you're there, please, follow our page, we need 100 followers to be able to start livestreaming to 'em. I'd like to be able to add them onto our streams, we're currently found on YouTube, Facebook at Politic and Politic Unfiltered, and on Twitter at Politic, and now on Rumble at Politic. So, follow us everywhere, and when we have a live broadcast, you can also find us live on our website at politik.com. And also, go to politik.com, click that support button, all proceeds go right back into expanding what we're doing here. I would like to be able to get a paid-for Rumble account, and that helps limit the advertising that goes on during a livestream to where, say, the first 1,000 viewers won't have to worry about, as long as you're a part of the plan, won't have to worry about commercials when we are live, live broadcasting. And every penny goes right back into what we're doing here. My goal is, one day, to find myself and hundreds of other people working for me around the state, livestreaming every assembly, school board, community council, you name it, political event, campaign event, you name it, any of those things that are going on, I wanna have someone there livestreaming it so you can hear it firsthand, just like what happened at the Anchorage School Board Assembly Meeting they had this week, and the parent coming in there to an empty room, reading that book to them. And it's pretty grotesque, I, I left a little bit of the excerpt in my description up above for this video. If you're curious, you can also go to Must Read Alaska and find the write-up on that. Thank you, guys, all for being here tonight, and again, don't forget to like and share, it's greatly appreciated. I'll see you the next time I go live.